I referenced you earlier and you weren't back there.
I think it depends on their phone, whatever. If you're using an Android speaker is not as good. We need to put your face. Pick an Android guy? Are you Android guy? Do you ever listen to live streams?
I do.
Can you hear?
Okay.
Usually.
I'll go ahead and tell you the back door. I'm gonna skip around a little bit. I'm gonna go ahead. It's juvenile jail right here. Where you go. Since you're here.
I've got a trial scheduled for one o'clock in there, so I'm gonna go.
Thank you.
Get a big page in that team. All right, what was yours?
Well, again, I sound like a brokener. I feel like I'm a broken record every time I come here because my budget never really changes. The biggest issue that we always, year after year, have to address is the contract we have with juvenile detention center there in Johnson City. That number is always fluctuating depending on the amount of young people we have to sit there. Last year was probably lower because of COVID. They, we weren't, there weren't many going to J C D C as often. But I feel like so far this year, we're starting to kind of make up for it because we've had a few go up there and had longer stays than what I'd say normal in 24 hours. But other than that, my budget pretty much is a carry, carry forth year after year with just salaries and regular expenses that come through. The, I will say, as well, the, there was a push there, I believe in 2019 with regard to making the position full-time. That's been tabled, so it's time to start addressing that because next year is an election. And that's basically the reason it was tabled was because it needs to be done prior to, right before the election year. It's something I would ask that the committee start looking into as well because the procedure of having to go through the commission and the general assembly and then back to the commission.
Can you come to the next personnel meeting so we can go ahead and get that process?
Sure, I'm glad to. When is it?
Should be the, is it the third Monday, Eric, when we have our budget meeting?
Are you trying to do personnel the same day?
Yeah, it'd be the same day.
Keep in mind, it's also the day that the schools are gonna present, so it might have been a certain length of day, but yeah, it's the third Monday again.
So we're looking at June the 21st?
Correct.
Yes, I can make that work. I, I don't have one matter scheduled right now at 1:30 that day.
Yeah, I mean, that way we're going to get.
Yes, sir.
Your correct was to say when we need to move stores.
Yes, sir. I would like, like to get that wheel greased again, please.
Both your meetings are at nine o'clock by the morning.
Okay, I can, I can be here that morning at nine o'clock.
Well, personally.
Personnel. Personally, 29, 9:30 was the first one probably.
Okay. I'm gonna put it on my calendar at nine o'clock and then I'll be here that way. I'm upstairs and I don't have anything else scheduled.
When's that school coming?
Usually that same day after the budget committee meeting, you'll have a joint meeting between the education committee and the budget committee to hear the school's first presentation.
What time are you? You can't be here.
I can. That day right now, I can't be here at one, from about 1:30 to 2:00. I have a Zoom hearing to address a matter in Sullivan County, but other than that, my day's wide open.
He's able to be here at five o'clock?
I can be here at nine o'clock.
I wish to be personal first.
Yeah, we should do personnel first, then do the budget.
Sure.
Is that all right? You, Mr. Condon, you the chairman?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Eric, can you let us know what we're gonna do? We'll do the personnel meeting, budget, then we'll do the budget.
And then do the joint education budget.
You up here?
Do it. You're welcome.
Any questions? For, uh, on the juvenile court. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all.
Hi, I'm Stacy.
Good afternoon. Eric, good to see you again.
Good morning.
Good afternoon, Matt. I'm here today as fire chief of the Stanley County Fire Department. Haven't really appeared before the commission in the last couple of years. We haven't really asked for anything. And I may be in front of the wrong committee this morning, but I want to express it, I guess, to both committees, this committee and the ad hoc committee, about our intentions and how we would like to be available for some of the stimulus money that may come in. And the association president, he's here today too, I think. He'll, he'll probably have some requests that may go more in depth than if one I was in. Back in 2020, we ran a total of just 136 calls and up to date this year, we ran a total of 62 calls. In 2020, our total expenditures for the year was 31,000. And I'm kind of fortunate in that aspect. I manage probably one of the smallest budgeted fire departments in the county. We only operate the one station. Some fire departments operate two stations. So the budget that we make annually is pretty much covered by what comes from the county. So I kind of have enough of a cushion set back that if we receive zero donations from anybody else, the money we receive from the county will follow that operation through for that budget year. The, uh, the request, I guess that what I'm wanting to do is out of this COVID money is the bunker gear the department has. They haven't received new bunker gear since 2003. The bunker gear they received in 2003 was obtained on, on a grant. So none of the, none of the gear that the department currently has is in, within compliance. I'd like to replace at least 10 sets just within my department. And you're probably looking at an average cost of about $3,000 a set. And then at some point, I would like to rotate out some older model air bottles. So if you look in the request that I turned in for.
Hang on, let me get my phone. There's a 132.
Okay, sorry, David. Oh, that's okay. Now I can't find my, uh, my current 2021. I may have left it on the, on my desk. Anyway, if you'll look at the, the the anticipated expenditure for 2021 and then you look at the anticipated revenues, I've just listed the, I'll share. Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Roach.
It's okay. Jason's fine.
Uh, I did ask for the $50,000 and if you'll see, that'll leave us at, at the end of the year with an anticipated surplus of 41,000. However, that 41,000 anticipated surplus is not counting the purchase of any bunker gear, which would be purchased through the extra funds if we weren't getting funds to the department out of that 50,000. And I'm okay with the stimulus money, COVID wouldn't have it everywhere with, you wouldn't have to necessarily give it to our department. We would really need, like to have the equipment upgraded. If there was a question as to any transparency, if, if money given to the department, how it was used, you know, we're not objected to if the county's able to take any stimulus money and buy us some equipment out of it, such as what we're needing with the, with the protection gear, the bunker gear. But that's, uh, that's kind of where I'm at. Do y'all have any questions?
Well, I'll go ahead and tell everybody since you're about second year, the ad hoc committee meeting again, June the 10th at 6:00 P.M. over here in the commissioner's room. If, if you guys want to go in front of them, since you're kindly asking for the rescue man. I will say, I know in the past that the fire department has been a little bit promised only here that you're talking about, so that's probably something that, that money I think can't handle what I agree, so, but I'm not guaranteeing it.
Well, we kind of seen as an opportunity to finally get, get something without spending local tax dollars to help, help us out a little bit.
And I mean, it's so much money and it's mailing for you guys. I mean, the fire departments, rescue, mercy service, blah, blah, blah. And I mean, the money's there, but there's stipulations you guys are gonna have to go through for COVID reasons to get this money. And, and I know part of it could be like you didn't have all these fundraisers and stuff like that. That stuff like that will qualify you guys for this money. Woody or Randy, you guys wanna kind of hit a swing to them a little bit since they're out here?
Yeah, this, well, best to replace funding either lost revenue or increased expenses due to changes in operations caused by COVID beginning March 31st of this year. That's the synopsis of it. So it's not specifically to buy a new turnout here. But if you suffered, suffered an income loss or an increase in expenses, that's for sure covered. But if capital equipment, we're gonna have to be creative to get that. And, and I, I want to say what I said to the sheriff. Personally, I'm a huge proponent of first responders. If that's, of the services that we should provide as a county to our citizens, that's right at the top of the list. So we're gonna try to figure out every way we can to get you guys the money. But there's a lot of hoops to be jumped through and the restrictions are, at the moment, I love this, the feds call the report, the interim final. In the interim final report, there's a lot of restrictions on how that money can be, can be granted out to third parties. If we do it wrong, we gotta pay the feds back.
Any loss you guys can show. Any loss. That will help a lot right there. If you've had fundraisers and you raised $20,000 in the past year, you can show it on paper and bring to us. That really relieves us a lot as of right now. We're hoping that changes. We're hoping we get an email any day now saying it's been dropped, our review and redone like it did before. That's what we're hoping so we can turn it loose to buy turnout here or, or whatever we need. And that is just an example. I'm not saying we will. I'm just saying, uh, that, that's, of course, you all will be with that person, no doubt about it, so.
There may be a possibility that you may have to send some of this money back because there's no way none of us, we, we have never had $11 million even lose. So we, we're not gonna have an $11 million loss.
Well, we're hoping between radio and you guys.
We've got two years to.
Yeah, you know. And, and I mean, it's a great opportunity for you guys. I mean, it really is unless they open the gate.
We promise you there will be a penny go back if we can find a loophole or any way to, to get it spent for the benefit of taxpayers and first responders and everybody. We will spend every dime we can get.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great opportunity for you guys, so. Unless they open it up, then I guess everybody would be hunting it. Well, right now, it's a guess. I, I'm thinking it's best for you guys to get on, get your stuff together and go get it for them before they open it up. Kind of what I'm saying. I mean, it might be eight months down the road before it starts getting handed out. It might even be two years. We don't know. We ain't even got it yet. And I'm hoping none of it gets, starts spending until this year. Before we started spending, and I mean, I know several commissioners and I'm one of myself, we regret the way we spend it's lifetime. We didn't regret the way we spent it, but we spent so many million dollars in about 45 minutes. And I mean, us lost money in about 45 minutes, so. We, we wished we'd have come back and thought it out a little better on how to spend it instead of the way we did spend. And it'd probably been a whole lot more beneficial to the county.
The committee itself has talked, we will not send any records to the budget committee, so we heard from every single person in the county. And we'll evaluate each individual thing sent to us for priority reasons and then recommend to the budget committee, which will, did I guess, send to the commission.
Yeah, it's gonna be a three process. It'll go through the ad hoc, come back to the budget, then we'll send it on.
So I'm assuming that this money's not even budgeted. There's revenue in the front of the budget.
No, not. No, it ain't, isn't it?
Okay.
Have up to two years.
Yeah, so I guess getting to your point, I know you're needing money, but if it can come out of the COVID money, we probably ain't gonna try to take it out of the general fund.
Exactly, and I would want you to.
That's what I want everybody in this thinking, so.
But one thing I would like you to do with the general fund is a few years ago, we were in a budget crunch. Matter of fact, this board is very fortunate. If I understood the numbers right, you coming into this, looking at a $10 million surplus with a, with a $2 million deficit. When I was sitting back there, I came into this with a $3 million deficit without even looking at what the budget was gonna be yet. So you're very fortunate and good management is what will keep it that way. But during those times, a lot of the contributions was docked 2%. Since then, I think most of them have been reinstated. Now, if that being said, fire department did get a $4,000 one time increase one year and we got a 65, a $4,000, $6,500 increase the next. However, if you go back to your, on your budget document, does it have the proposed amount 1910 for the, under the fire departments? Is that what it's saying that you're projecting? Or what does it say? 1910. That 1910 is with that 2% deducted out of it. I think the rescue squads, E M A, I think all the other contributions you mentioned, everybody got their 2% back. The fire department never got their 2% back. So I guess at the very least, if we could do anything, I, I would like to have that the 2% reinstated back for the fire service. Or even better than that, to put us back at the 23110 that was made two years ago at that level. Either or. I mean, obviously the 23110, I would be happy with that, but if that can't fly, I would like to see them, see them put it back at the same percentage they were. And I, Eric, you may remember that I, but was the fire service the only one that did not get that 2% back? Do you remember at that time?
I can say that for sure. And, and not for or against what Mr. Lawrence proposed, just remember that, you know, we're our 2 million. So if that is something the committee chooses to do, you need to also choose to figure out a way to fund that. Not against it at all, just.
And he is correct. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. He, he is correct. We will live and get by on whatever. But I just, I just didn't want that to fall by the wayside if they never did get re-invested back up to their, their funding level that they initially were. To fund fire service in Hawkins, kind of a benefit, just an astronomical number. So, you know, you, you get a lot of benefits, but with really no much, no more money. I think it's, what, about 200, 260 some thousand dollars maybe for the fire service annually, something like that?
That's correct.
Probably couldn't operate one station with that. Jason, I don't think, I'm not gonna steal your papers here. And that, that's all I have unless y'all have any questions for me.
Can you bag any questions?
Stacy, as a member of that committee that you're referring to, I strongly agree that you all need to turn it here. And what I ran to you and your son was a price for 100 sets, eight per department for the county. And the price that he called and got was $3,000 a set, like you said. And Eric, would that have to be bid out or would we do that on state bids if this?
If there's one available, we could piggyback off of the state, but if not, if we're doing it collectively for that many departments, I'm sure we would exceed the bidding limit. So it just depend if there's already something available or not.
How, how is it that that would be feasible if we on state bids?
I'll, I'll care to reach out. You care for national, so that's a state bid on. I'll send an email and see.
If you would, Jamie, that'd be good. It would be for 100 cents and each department, I think Stacy would get eight cents. And like, maybe the cities didn't need theirs, they could give their own a cent, you know, ice cream or something.
Yeah, anything like that would be, uh, great and beneficial. We, our equipment is satisfactory. We're operating two pumpers, one reserve pumper, a mini pumper, a tanker and kind of a utility vehicle. And has fire, I mean, it's a fire truck, but it's, it's a larger than a mini pumper. Two years ago, which we didn't issue a press release on at the time, but we did, our I S O did lower from a nine to a six, six Y, six X. So if you're within five miles, you're, you're one. If you're outside five miles, you're, you're another. That did go on towards homeowners insurance that lives in the community. Of course, that would be a savings for, for everybody that's, that's right there close to us. So, you know, we are making improvements. We are trying to keep moving forward, but getting that I S O, basically an I S O nine, if you've just got a truck, it'll haul water. I mean, yes, that's, that's the bottom of the, that's where you're gonna start. So we moved from there to a six. So we're, we're proud of that right there in the community. Y'all have any other questions? Board of directors is pretty rough, Danny.
Does your, uh, $3,000 for your bumper, your, your, your air pack?
No, no, you'd be looking over, what would you say, Jamie, over $10,000, probably plus to $15,000 a set for an air pack, I'd say.
Jeff, I apologize for that. It's just what they put on. You go into a building, burn it, cook it, blue it, pan it, fluff it, $3,000. His son Christopher, one of the manufacturers, checked on it and it was, uh, $3,000 a set for 100 sets. I don't know how many people, manufacturers make those, so. We don't think we need to be bidding now if we.
I, I think, I, I think that the major director finds it, um, a state bid, that was probably the best way to go. But we're, we're putting the cart weight before the horse on that a little bit. We need to make sure we can spend that money.
Yeah.
Let's focus on, let's focus on getting that money so we can do that with.
I think it might be.
Better than a bus, I hope. I hope, because it, that would be a good, that COVID money, I mean, with, with the stipulations, it's gonna be a good time to take care of a lot of issues that's been pushed down the road for many, many years. And I know when I sat on this, uh, when I sat on this board, the nonprofits, we're here time and time again every year, you know, wanting things, and we just do what we can do. We would all appreciate if you could help us out any of it with, with that.
I'll reach out to procurement national, say those items are safe, but I'll, I'll see you later. What's happening?
Thank you. Okay, everybody turn the page 20 forward.
First off, you guys left a prayer with me. This is a new, a new endeavor that I'm having to do here. First of all, I can say, good afternoon. Thank you guys for allowing the nonprofit bond agencies to provide emergency services to this county to be able to come down and discuss and talk with you guys. The letter that I handed out here was kind of a brief synopsis of what I'm wanting to discuss, talk about in a formal way to have something to reference to. First off, church rescue squad, for a little bit of background, was started in June 1962 where it was 100% volunteer. That still is the exact same way today along with many of these other agencies. Church rescue squad right now has currently 30 active members on our membership with several lifetime members and several associate members. Church rescue squad covers the eastern portion of the county. We have Hawkins County Rescue Squad covering the remainder to the west of our primary response zone. We do cover, uh, rescue EMS assist, assisting Hawkins County EMS. And now we also provide first responder services to the eastern portion of Hawkins County. Our coverage area doesn't stop there. A prime example, the other morning when Mr. Trout went missing and E M A ended up paging out pretty much the entire county to assist with that. We were part of that. We also belong to T A R's where we respond to, technically could respond to anywhere within the state of Tennessee. And the same with Hawkins County Rescue Squad. We are in region one, so anytime they could call it a region one, we could be going anywhere within region one in Knoxville, southeastern portions of Tennessee at any point in time. The rescue squad as of right now, other than Stacy's mentioned, the additional money that come from the COVID stuff receives $49,000 a year. Of that $49,000, the church rescue squad, after the board of directors met and finalized our budget proposal, budget that we submitted, has identified several, um, key and crucial items for our facility to continue to provide the services we provide in a timely and safe manner of an increase of $290,000. And you see that as a, that is a large, a large increase and we completely understand that. There's, there's a few things that really we find as critical. And in that letter, you can see of those, ultimately, training is a, is a, is a crucial step. You can have a hundred people on your roster and I can have a hundred and fifty people show up on, on a daily basis as membership. But if I'm not able to get these people trained to the different skill levels with services that we provide, that does several different things. They end up turning around going from a good thing to a hindrance. If they're not training that, that puts my people in, in harm's way and also could escalate the situation that we're responding to to try to mitigate it, to bring it down, to make it safe. Of those classes and thank you to them about this additional funding. With everything that our agency has been through in the last two years, we tried to reach out and obtain several, what in this field is technical rescue classes that where you have the equipment to provide. All but one of those was canceled due to COVID. The issue with that is most of these technical rescue classes are costly. Due to, one, the time, most of these classes last a minimum of three days on to five days. That's eight, ten, twelve hour days, depending on what class you're taking, for these volunteers, members to come in and attain this training. Other training is trench rescue training, low angle and high angle rope rescue, machinery ag rescue, extrication, advanced extrication, swift water rescue, ma- mass transit, search and rescue, and now starting the first responder program, a minimum level of emergency medical responder, which is the lowest medical license you can have through the state of Tennessee. So that alone there for four of those classes, for twenty people to attend four of those classes, which if we're able to get the funding, which additional, additional funding that these other agencies could obtain, to provide this is right at twenty five thousand dollars for these classes for twenty people. This would be open to anybody in the county to send members of their agencies there in the open spots that will be there. And as of right now, projected, you're looking at probably at least a minimum of eight, if not ten, spots open for Hawkins County Rescue Squad, the volunteer fire departments, EMA if they were going into it, the hazmat team, to send these people in here to get cross-trained where we have more people that are legit trained in these disciplines to be able to respond. Of, of these training right now, of thirty people that we have, just to give a kind of rough rundown on, on what timeframe it takes, of thirty people, we have three people in our agency at this time that are trench rescue operational certified. Many with the equipment that we have, we can show up and start executing a, a trench rescue. Just due to the complexity of a trench rescue, that would be automatically one of those that we would automatically have Hawkins County Rescue Squad dispatched to. Not only that, we would actually also have to contact Kingsport Life Security Group, Kingsport Fire Department, they also have a paid technical team on staff. And depending on the complexity of it, that's something that may end up going to a region one call out to be able to make sure you get the manpower there and the equipment and all the supplies there to be able to execute something like that. Farm rescue, we have three people, low angle, we have five, high angle, we have one. We have three for mass transit, bus, eighteen wheeler, commercial vehicle. And we have one confined space rescue. Several of our members have, have took initiative to get onto an awareness level. That is very beneficial for our agency, but pretty much for the awareness level is the understanding of the equipment that needs to be involved in this. They know the generic setup of it and they can help us to start. Past that, they're not the level of training to be able to actually partake within that rescue discipline. Along with that, we, on, as of May tenth, we partnered with Hawkins County EMS Jason Merle to start a cardiac arrest responder program and a first responder program. We were not the first one to do this, Mount Carmel Fire Department was the kind of, I guess you consider the pilot program for this to get started. They were implementing this. Approximately three months, probably. Approximately three months prior to us finalizing this with their board of directors and their medical director to come on board. Initially, EMS can request us at any point in time to come and assist them in the category we consider EMS assist. Already this year, if you look in there, you can see already this year, we've responded to a hundred and thirty-eight dispatch calls to us. Those not calls that sometimes we have members there, we hear that it's something that could be beneficial and request. This is strictly dispatched, called in, Hawkins County Central Dispatch dispatches this out to them. Of those a hundred and thirty-eight calls this year, we've already assisted EMS with seventy-three of our hundred and thirty-eight calls. Of those seventy-three calls, eight of those have been while we've had a medically trained personnel on duty, dedicating their time for free. Eight of those were done with the first responder program. I, I project by the end of the year, that number to be quite substantial. This, this program is extremely beneficial to the citizens of the county. This is a program that I would like to see other agencies in this county start to partake on. This assists EMS tremendously. Just due to the call volumes of EMS, the amount of ambulances, there are critical times already that we have utilized this program that maybe EMS have been tied up at the hospital, just responding back to Mount Carmel Churchill as close as they are. We have had a medically trained professional on scene in four minutes or less, five, six minutes, depending on where it's at, within our primary area. There's no way leaving Holston Valley, they could be there in that amount of time. Part of that fun, additional funding would go to those in my, my department, becoming EMR, minimum EMR certified. More people there to be able to participate in this program to assist the citizens and also the visitors of this county. The other critical aspect of this was infrastructure. Our building has not had any major renovations or anything done to it since it was built in nineteen sixty-two, except for they had a water heater blow up. In turn, that part had to be renovated, but that has also been easily over forty years ago. So with that being said, we have two critical issues. Our H vac systems that are for our building are in a very severe state. We have two units, one is completely done. We've had multiple bids to fix it, for us to fix it is gonna be much more substantial than replacing the unit itself due to the size and age of the units. This in turn, one unit running a building of our size, as old as it is, is crippling a utilities device. Because it almost has to constantly run to keep it, and I won't, I won't even say nice, but comfortable within that building. Our parking lot, we have an issue with our parking lot to access a lower base. It on one side is almost completely washed out, anywhere from a foot to almost two foot rut. We have tried to repair and replace on different cheaper methods, just to get it pretty much to band-aid along. This alone is very critical considering we have two apparatuses that we're able to store up top due to weight. The rest of the apparatuses have to be stored in our lower base. Our heavy rescue truck, our ATVs, our UTVs, our boats, and also our now technical rescue truck that we re-appropriated from our light rescue is now all housed downstairs. So this is something that we're having to look at to, in a timely manner to address, because if not, it may come to the point that it may not be safe enough for us to, to get these vehicles out to respond. Of, of the training with our members and what this, what our agency provides, as of right now, I have fifteen members that are medically trained. Of those fifteen members, I have four EMRs, three basic EMTs, five advanced EMTs and three paramedics that volunteer their time at my agency, soon to be a fourth paramedic, he is finishing up paramedic school as we speak. I have a minimum of eight other members that have already stressed that if I were to get additional funding to provide an EMR class, they will be attending this class to bring that total then to twenty-two or, and or twenty-three. We have one that's kind of on, on, on the fence there. Not only that, we, a lot of our members are dual certified, I'll say that, a lot more other than just rescue disciplines. Sixteen and sixty-four hour Tennessee fire training, firefighter one, firefighter two through the state. TMS, which is a, I don't say new, but is a newer program, traffic incident management systems program. We have several of their hazmat awareness, hazmat ops, we have two of their hazmat technician. All of our members are required to obtain ICS one, two, seven and eight, we have several that have went further upon that. And we have two that have actually gained their ICS professional development series certification. We have certified instant safety officers, mass transit rescue, pasture trained rescue, active shooters, PALS, ACLS, PHCLS, pairs, we have BLS instructor. We also were able to provide five of our members to go become EVOP, Vanessa K. Free certified, to be able to teach that class. That class is being able to be delivered free throughout the county. It was to be setting up a class through any department through the county that needs that, we have five instructors that can go and instruct that for, at free cost. Apparatus wise, we, we house our rescue one, which is a medium rescue, rescue two, which is our heavy rescue, rescue three is our technical rescue and also our first response backup, rescue five is our trench truck, rescue seven is our first, primary first responder vehicle. Once again, our ATVs, our UTVs, boat, swift water, technical rescue trailer and also we house a communications trailer. To kind of give a perspective, last year alone, our agency responded to two hundred and fifty-one calls. Of those two hundred and fifty-one calls, a hundred and thirty-four of those were EMS assists and ninety-nine of those were vehicle accidents. Already this year, as of today, as of eleven o'clock, we've ran a hundred and thirty-eight calls already this year and not at the end of completion of May. Of those a hundred and thirty-eight calls, fifty-three of those have been wrecks, seventy-three of those have been EMS assists with fire standbys, water rescues and also search and rescues. Kind of in principle, when you look at other agencies, other counties that provide the services, a paid service, their, their, the rescue techs get paid on average ten dollars an hour. Just from the calls that we've ran already this year, our members have provided one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight hours of standby hours. And that's not hours counted to training, business meetings and/or calls themselves, calls alone, two hundred and seventeen man hours have been provided for a total of two thou, or for a total of two thousand twenty-three hours. You're gonna pay one individual that ten dollars an hour, you're looking at twenty-three thousand twenty-three dollars. So when you start looking at what, what each one of these volunteer agencies provide on money aspect of it, as it was stated, your, your emergency medical services are a very crucial part to provide for our residents and visitors of this county. Once again, like I said, I appreciate you guys' time. I, I look at attending the ad hoc meeting on June tenth also. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, I'm gonna start off, I told Sheriff this morning, and I mean, it's all, baby, I really appreciate you guys on that search and rescue thing you did the other day. I mean, that was a fabulous job. So, and I, I highly respect all you guys for what you do, so. Doing this is your first time, you're doing a pretty good job, so.
Appreciate it.
You can show up a week early, Lee.
I did, I showed up a week early, I was on a long day. I was ready last week.
Anybody got any questions?
Thanks very much. Anytime you guys would like to stop by, just let us know, you guys stop by, visit with us, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, thanks you guys for being here today.
Hey, I'm gonna meet with Jason, let me see if I can find it. I'll look, you mentioned I could find it, so.
Twenty, twenty-sixty-four?
Sixty-four. I'll just check, just take a big place.
Hawkins County EMS has come before the Hawkins County Budget Committee to request a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from the Hawkins County General Fund this year. The same amount that was requested last year. This funding will provide assistance for improvements to assist Hawkins County EMS grow, recruit and retain employees, which is the biggest concern and issue with Hawkins County EMS currently is recruitment and retention of employees. As Mr. Coop stated, they have several volunteers that work for them that are medically trained, with only three of them that are currently employed part-time with Hawkins County EMS. EMS is a very difficult job. A lot of people don't enjoy it due to the fact of the circumstances that you're put in, the hours that you have to work, as well as the call volume. But this past year, I believe, has proven to be an idle experiment. It has shown the importance and the necessity for healthcare in general, whether it be pre-hospital care, EMS or primary care services or hospital services. I personally can only speak to the EMS aspect. These men and women show up every single day knowing the increased risks that they would face throughout each and every day. They were required to take extra precautions to protect themselves, as well as their coworkers, families, medical staff, citizens and patients. They all had the thought of possibly contracting the virus and suffering from a severe case to even possibly death. But they continued to show up and perform their duty to the citizens of Hawkins County. I'm sure there are some that will say, well, they knew what they were signing up for when they started. To that remark, I will strongly disagree. Not one that signs up for this job knows what they will encounter, what they will see, what they will contract, what they may, may take home to their families, the best way they know how, and then show up to their ship, their next ship, ready to live it all over again. Yes, I may be partial to EMS, but that is my passion, my career that I chose and all of. These men and women deserve more than probably ever could be given to them. It truly does take a special person to do this job. With that being said, currently Hawkins County EMS receives a sixty thousand dollar contribution to provide ambulance service to the fifty-six thousand plus citizens and visitors of Hawkins County. The men and women of Hawkins County EMS responded to eight thousand eight hundred and seven calls in twenty twenty and transported seven thousand one hundred and thirty-four patients to medical care facilities. They provided an average response time throughout the year of nine minutes and eight seconds. The average time from dispatch to being back in service from any response was fifty-nine minutes and twenty-three seconds. These men and women also logged over two hundred and fifty thousand miles driven over the year. The funding that is provided by Hawkins County compared to the responses of Hawkins County EMS equates to six dollars and eighty-one cents per response. In other words, Hawkins County is being provided countywide ambulance service for six dollars and eighty-one cents per response. Think about the cost savings this is providing to Hawkins County. On average, to continue to provide the services that are being rendered for Hawkins County would cost approximately three million dollars and that does not include capital expenditures to continue to improve and provide new equipment. If Hawkins County is unable to or is not interested in pursuing a joint venture with Hawkins County EMS, this request should be the next option. If Hawkins County EMS is approved for the increased funding, it would increase the average cost per response from the general fund to seven dollars and three cents. This is still a cost savings to Hawkins County for the services that are provided. As I stated previously, this increased funding could assist in Hawkins County EMS becoming more attractive to EMS personnel for recruitment and retention purposes. This could allow EMS to utilize funds in a more resourceful manner. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and I would also like to point out some other issues for this coming year on our budget wise. So far this year, we've already seen a twenty-seven percent increase in fuel costs, which I don't foresee coming down much, if any, throughout the year, possibly increasing. We've also seen a four point five percent increase in health insurance for our employees. And compared from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we have had a twenty percent increase in transports out of county instead of going locally to a local hospital. So twenty percent more than normal, we are going to Kingsport, Johnson City, Moorestown, sometimes even Jefferson County from a scene. from a scene, uh, out of county. When before, we would transport more down here to the local hospital, um, and get a unit back in service a whole lot quicker. For the reason for that, I'm not sure. We usually try to take patients where they prefer to go if possible, uh, but depending on their medical condition, it could warrant going out of county more often.